Hey Nancy. We're on speakerphone, we're almost here and I'm gonna call immediately to order. It's uh 5:30 on uh Monday, December 2nd, 2019. We've got Nancy on the phone for about 25 minutes, an hour, she's heading back to town. We'll probably be doing some serious change here.
You have to change your settings.
Other than that, we're almost here. We're gonna have to talk tonight.
It's always been such a worry. You don't have to use it.
My apologies to the flag of the United States of America. We choose the republic for what it sustains. Our nation, every hour, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a meeting of all meetings.
Just a normal.
Topic for discussion is facilities planning. We made a better meeting, but we were only was uh... I'll turn it over to uh...
Well, I'm gonna let Andy start. I'm gonna take a sip of water just real quick. I had a little spell upstairs that didn't go well. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm calling this version 2.0. It is not a reiteration or a um adaptation of our meeting from November 18th. We're gonna be continuing, I am assuming, these discussions as we move forward and try to understand information and develop where it might lead us and create that roadmap. We have a fair amount, there's a fair amount of topics on this evening. There are slides for all of them. I do have a handout, I believe Mr. Ross has a handout as well. Be talking about the November 18th. Just really quickly, what did we discuss at that meeting? Mr. Ross is gonna go over our secondary school and auxiliary buildings, come up with the FCI or the Facility Condition Index of those other buildings that we didn't get to on the 18th. We're gonna talk about educational square foot standards and our operational costs. Talk about property values. This is a result of a request by the board of what was south of NN. I even give you two, given you uh two different options, really taking a look at really what the Jackson attendance area is as well. So two different pieces there. Building construction referendum versus leasing a building. And that was another question that was brought up recently. I wanted to just talk a little bit about what that looks like and how it impacts us with access to money. I do have some student transportation summaries indicated. I'll probably bring around a printout, just a little bit more detail. I have a summary in a couple of slides. And then as well, one of the other questions was, what does Board Policy 188 look like? That's specific to high school configuration review process. So it's fairly rigorous process to go through. I've outlined that in a few different slides. Let's take a look at that as well. Again, any point you have a question, you'd like some discussion, don't be shy. I don't think we will be, so. What did we talk about on November 18th? We talked about enrollment history. We talked about enrollment projections, what it looks like over the past, what it looks like, may look like in the future. Spoke a little bit about open enrollment information, where our kids are coming and going, what schools they're, they could be attending if they were educated within the West Bend schools. Spoke just briefly about voucher information. Mr. Ross shared the elementary school information and the FCI of those buildings as far as we got. So we're gonna be continuing that and I think I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Ross.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to take a quick minute and go over exactly what the Facility Condition Index is. And it's really a ratio of repair needs versus reproduction value. So it's expressed as a percentage. So if you had a building that had a replacement cost of a million dollars and you had $90,000 worth of repairs that needed to be done to it, you'd be looking at an FCI of 9%. Again, it provides a consistent methodology across all the buildings, so we're looking at everything exactly the same way. The square foot cost for construction, I use the $225 per square foot that the Citizens' Task Force used. Remember that that $225 square foot had a plus or minus 20% range on it. So it's pretty broad. And I think actually if you were to build a new elementary, you'd probably be looking in the upper end of that range rather than the lower end. So the first building we're gonna look at tonight is Silverbrook. Silverbrook opened in 2014. It's a 19 section building, which means there are 19 classrooms of 5th and of 6th grade in the building. It shows a 31, just about a 32 acre site, but a lot of that is actually when you drive down Silverbrook, the east side of the road in front of the school, that lovely swamp is ours. So as the building stands today, it has, a lot of the original building is left from 1965. It had an addition in 1995 that is still there. And in 2014, there was 99,000 square feet added to the building. The existing building got a very heavy remodel, so when you walk through Silverbrook, it's really difficult to tell when you're going from one section of the building to the other. There's a total student capacity of 1,102 students, based on our class sizes that we went over last time. Ideally, you'd wanna be at about 90%, which you wouldn't really wanna have more than 992 students in the building. Currently, we're at 79% and we actually have room for about 117 more students in the facility. This is the layout of Silverbrook. You can see that it's kind of broken up. We have the 5th and 6th grades in different areas. So this is the 5th grade up in this area. 6th grade is more down in this area. The music area is kind of in the middle. All the specials are kind of located within the middle of the building, except for PE, which is down at the far end with the gym. So if we were to use the square footage and the $225 a square foot, it would cost about $42 million to replace Silverbrook. We have some roofing work that still remains to be done at that building, and so there's about $1.2 million worth of work that needs to be done over the next 10 years, giving us an FCI of 3%. At Badger, that building opened in 2012. It's a 21 acre site. Building is about 210,000 square feet. The original construction in Badger was, that's left, is 1956. That area received a pretty light remodeling, so it's actually pretty easy to tell when you go into the older section of Badger. There's a student capacity of 1,125 students. Our current enrollment is 928 students, so we're really looking at about an 82% occupancy rate, so there's room for very few students in Badger right now, but the Silverbrook class coming up is gonna be smaller, so that cushion will get a little bit bigger. There are three floors at Badger, on the ground floor, and this is the same on just about every level. This area of the building is basically academic classrooms. Each one, each floor is just about exactly the same. The offices and guidance area for the building are down in the lower corner. Art is located in this corner. We do have, let's see, there's some, lost the color on there. But there are some PE spaces down below. The area where the pointer's at right now is actually a cardio room. On the second, on the second floor, the large gym area, the purple area is music, foreign language, and the library media center is on the second floor as well. Then on the third floor, again, classrooms, and then there's a balcony actually up in the gym in the green that you can see that's used for PE. Again, reproducing that building would be $47.5 million. We've got about a million and a half dollars with the capital projects. It's hard to believe, but that building is pushing 10 years old now. So there's some issues where we need to get in there, do some painting. We're all caught up on the roofing. Generally, the building's in very good shape, so we have an FCI of 3%, which puts it in the good condition category.
Dave, just a quick comment. You use the same construction cost for all the buildings?
Correct.
Okay, and just, or just for clarification, that Silverbrook, the Badger, Badger and the high school typically are gonna have higher construction costs than the elementary based on locker rooms and gym space and all the other science rooms that go with it. And so that, that it's okay because we use the same cost for remodeling as well. That cost for replacement probably is too low based on what it costs to build a new middle school, but then the cost of improvements is probably too low as well based on improvements of a middle school. Bottom line is the 3%, it might be 5%, it might be 2%. It's a good quality building, but when you look at Silverbrook, Badger, and the high school, that 225 with the 20% variance probably is pretty significantly low based on construction costs for a high school facility or for a middle school facility.
The next building that we're gonna look at is the high school. The high school is about 300, or 464,000 square feet. It sits on 75 acres of land. That includes the land on the east side of the road. Originally constructed in 1970, the pool was put on in 1977. In 1995, there was a significant addition put on, and then in 2000, 2010, and 2014, there were relatively small additions added as well. The total capacity for the building at the worst possible ca, or the maximum is 2,330 students. Currently, we have 2,184 students. Typically, high schools run at about 80% of capacity, and so 80% of the 2,300 students is 1,864 students. So we're running right now at about 94%. It's been very, yes?
When you do that, what would be maybe the point of that? Is there a third part of the thing? Are you allowed to fill in or...?
No, that, actually, if you calculate it that way, it would be a much higher number. It's actually based on the fact that teachers have times where they are actually in classrooms helping students, so that classroom isn't available even though it's occupied and you have a lot more, you need a lot more flexibility to run a high school than you do in elementary school. Everything's pretty well programmed in an elementary school. Okay, then we're there, good. So we're really a little bit overcapacity at the high school right now, but again, going by the enrollment trends that we've seen, we should fall into the square foot category pretty nicely. Most of the building is just about 50 years old. 23% of it is less than 30 years old. And while I'm not gonna show it, the high school does have a basement area, and that's actually about 34,000 square feet, which is, you know, just about the size of one of our elementary schools. And down there, there are mechanical rooms, there are some locker rooms, a wrestling room, but again, it's not really, you know, the major spaces. Major spaces are definitely on the, on the first and second floor. You can see there's, first floor, a lot of PE area and science areas up at the front of the building, math rooms, the music room is down, located down in this corner. On the second floor, we've got a lot of social studies rooms, business ad, and again, some PE space. Currently, we're showing this space as the library right now, but that should be changing next year over to this side. So this will, this will not be cataloged in the next rendition of this.
I have a question.
Yes.
Oh, I'm gonna let you do that part first, then I'm gonna ask it.
Okay, all I gotta do is figure out Andy's keyboard here. Okay. Next slide?
Yeah, I got it ahead.
Okay, okay. Again, at the $225 a square foot and with Don's asterix on that, the replacement cost, the reproduction cost of the high school would be about $104 million. When we went through the high school as part of the CFAC group, we noticed, well, we're able to categorize a lot more than $45 million worth of repairs that needed to be done up there. There's a lot of cosmetic work, a lot of mechanical work that needs to be done. So rather than load things up, I use the $45 million mark. Either way, if, you know, if it's 35, it's still in a critical condition. There's a lot of work that needs to be done up at the high school.
Okay. I realize that we're doing this so we can have an apples to apples comparison, we can have a cohesive way to understand our district as a whole, but I wanna make sure that we are literally defining building reproduction cost here. If we were to build the exact same building over again, which if we were gonna start from scratch somewhere else, we wouldn't, most likely.
That number, the walls may not be exactly the same, but what I did was I took the square footage of the existing building and multiplied it by $225.
Absolutely.
That's why I'm calling it reproduction cost.
Absolutely fair, absolutely fair. And the $45 million is the laundry list of things that, that you've determined if we were not gonna rebuild the building from scratch that would need to be done in order to get it to the good, to excellent condition, correct?
I think you would probably get it to the fair to good category.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is because with the planning enrollment and anyone who's ever remodeled the house before knows that it can cost more to remodel than it does to build over again. I wonder if we would build a smaller building than the existing large high school and therefore the cost to build a new high school would actually be less and therefore the capital projects would actually be a greater percentage of what we would spend on a new building. Does that make sense?
Yes, I hear what you're saying. I think though that...
Would you agree with that, I guess?
To a degree, I would agree with that. I think with, with the high school, using the 224 or $225 a square foot is gonna be really light. I think you'd be closer to 270, 280 a square foot. And since I don't have a calculator with me, I can't do the math in my head. But, you know, then you start looking at, well, is 45 million really the right number? Because, you know, somebody might say that the building doesn't need paint. Well, I think it desperately needs paint and, you know, it hasn't been painted for a very long time. There are just things that need to be done and basic upkeep. So yeah, I, depending, depending on where that number ends up, yeah, it's, it's really a good number to look at, but, you know, again, you don't see very often high schools being replaced in the state. They're just so expensive to replace that.
Oh, I'm not saying that's what we should do. I'm just saying for the sake of, it's one thing to have the same, I mean, I think you've done the best you can with, as far as trying to evaluate each building, since we do have a variety of new and older buildings, but I do think it's important to look at each one individually and just kind of...
I agree.
...examine it from a culture perspective instead of the...
Right, this is, this is very broad brush.
Right, exactly.
When Dave and I talked earlier, that the one thing about the high school, even though it's 50 years old and it would cost a significant amount of money to replace it, okay? Structurally, it's still a very sound building, okay? That some of our other elementary schools really are, they've outlived their useful life, okay? There may be a metal building with a brick fascia or whatever, where the, the high school, even though it's 50 years old and there are a lot of things that need to be done to the facility to bring it up to speed, structurally, it's still a very sound building. It's kind of like McLean. Even though McLean, we've just stuck some significant dollars into McLean and there's some, some things that need to be done there as well, structurally, it's, it's a pretty solid building, more so than some of our elementaries that were built in a different era and probably built for a shorter lifespan than what the high school would be. Is that...
Oh, that's, that's more than fair.
Yeah.
You know, I guess you kind of have to take a, take a look back, and in the late 50s and 60s and probably even early 70s, I mean, districts around the state were throwing up buildings like crazy because everybody my age was going through school at that point. So there was, there was a lot of construction that was done really quickly and inexpensively because communities just were doing the best they could possibly do just to keep up. The next building that we'll look at is actually this one, the Education Service Center. This building is about 36,000 square feet and sits on 1.1 acres. The original warehouse portion of the building was actually built in 1930 and it's actually kind of part of the Amity building next door. There's actually a wall that was put up when the district bought this to separate the underground parking from our warehouse down there. So you can kind of see how, by department, how this building is laid out. There's down on the, on the lower level, this is, this is actually our warehouse area. There's a lot of mechanical space. We also have two programs for students in this building. One is Great Expectations, and we also have the GTO program. So I'm not sure how many students are here at any one time because they're coming and going all the time, but there's a significant amount of students here. Upstairs is all office space up on the second floor. Several years ago, we had some pretty significant indoor air quality problems in this building, so there was a lot of work done at the upstairs and with the mechanical systems. So we're actually in pretty good shape in terms of repairs that need to be done. There's still an air handler, or two air handlers up in the mechanical penthouse that were original from 1959, so those are a challenge to keep going, but we've, we've managed to battle through so far. So this building actually has an FCI of 6%. And the, the building that you didn't see when you went on your tours earlier this spring is the maintenance garage. And the maintenance garage was actually purchased from We Energies. It's about a 6,200 square foot building, sits on 1.7 acres. And that building, there are, well, there's 6,000 square feet of building space. We actually have a salt shed where we, because we buy salt off the state bid and you have to store it appropriately so that we can get it when we, we need it. No students over there, originally constructed in 59, had an addition in 61. You can kind of see the layout of the building. This is really where we keep all of our vehicles. It's, it's a very tight space. In fact, we started actually using the old DPW building in Jackson that we now own to store some of our stuff, so we don't have to keep it outside. It's a shame to spend good money on pieces of equipment and leave it sit outside all winter, so we're doing the very best we can with that facility. It's actually in, in not bad shape. Replacement costs on that would be about 1.4 million. There's about $176,000 worth of repairs that are gonna need to be done there. Primarily, it's new roof system and a couple of rooftop HVAC units. There's really not much in that building to go wrong. Again, it's, it's a, it's a maintenance shop area more than anything else.
Dave, is there space on that parcel? If, if stored space is a limitation today, is there room to expand on that property?
Yes, yes, there is.
Thank you.
Dave, I wanna pick on these last two buildings before you move on.
Okay.
Part of the private task force recommendation was closing the maintenance shed and closing this building. Do they still serve a purpose and are we paying a fortune just to operate them? I mean, if you go back to the, to this building with a FCI of only 6%, which would mean it's in pretty darn good shape, would we really be saving a lot of money just by, by closing shop and obviously you would hopefully sell it?
Yeah.
Make some money on a sale, but how about just running the building every day?
Um, it's, and you'll see in some slides later on because I got the utility costs in there.
Okay.
You know, we basically have a full-time custodian here. And, you know, there's, there's a little bit of maintenance, but there's really not a whole heck of a lot. We were very fortunate in that all the office partitions and furniture that you see upstairs, that was all donated to the district, so we, and the best part of it is, you can still get replacement parts, so, you know, we don't end up with odd colored office panels in there that barely fit, but it, it doesn't cost a huge amount of money. And again, you'll see the maintenance building doesn't cost a huge amount of money.
Would we like more space at the maintenance shed? Yes, but does it still serve the purpose of protecting our vehicles and that...
Yeah.
Our guys can work on things down there and...
Yep, they can tear things apart and do some work on them and, you know, keep, keep going on things, so yes. They, they're, they're both functional buildings.
And Dave, to your comment about having an FTE custodian here, if we were to implement the task force's recommendation of consolidating to a single campus, you may reduce some level of custodial service, but you're gonna need custodial services for the rest of that facility, so at the end of the day, maybe it's a net reduction of half, you know, 20 hours a week?
Maybe, yeah, depending upon how things got divided up and spread out, so...
It's marginal, I guess, is where I'm kind of heading, you know, along with Joel's comments about operating costs, that it isn't that, doesn't seem to be that far out of line to be enticing to do the consolidation modelness.
No, and actually, when you, when you look at the report that I handed out, I mean, that has all the energy costs in it, and I'll cover that in a little bit, but you can kind of see where we are and how all the buildings fare in the evaluation, so. The next thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was square foot per student standards. That seems to be a hot topic and we, I did have a question on that. And I did a little bit of research and found that in Wisconsin, over the last 15 years, elementary schools have, schools have ranged from 125 to 140 square feet per student. You can see what middle and high school come in as well. The numbers in red are actually from the Minnesota Department of Children, Families and Learning, and it's from their guide for construction projects, so it just gives a little something to compare to. To kind of go back and talk about the, the task force presentation that you had a few months ago, if we used 125 to 140 square feet per student, based on the numbers that were there, that the building would actually need to be 97,875 square feet to 109,620 square feet. Probably with that number of students, it would actually need to be a little bit larger than that because you'd end up having to double up on your special spaces because you could never get by with just one art room, one music room, and you'd probably need a multi-section gym to go along with that. So just something to kind of keep in the back of your mind. And then, again, just so you have a point of reference against these numbers, currently at McLean, and I chose McLean just because it's a fairly, there's a lot of students at McLean, it's fairly tight, we're at 144 square feet per student at McLean. At Silverbrook, we're at 216, and at the high school, right now, we're at 212.
Dave, before you go any farther, we talk about the point of return, as far as, once you make it bigger, obviously, you can have a little bit less space for per kid if it's 400 students as opposed to 300 students, but once you get over a certain point in time, then you need more space per student because you double up on the art room, you double up on the music room, you have a bigger gym space, and typically, it's about four sections.
About four sections, yep.
Four sections, so if you look at 25 kids per section and in a, you know, you're looking at somewhere in that 500 to 600 range, once you get over that point, 600, you know, I, many of our elementaries are K5, not in West Bend, but many statewide are K5, so you look at six grade levels, 100 kids per grade level, 600 really is the max before you start lose that point of diminishing return. Somewhere in between 500 and 600 is where most new elementaries, if you're gonna go over that, they really caution it because you're, first of all, you're making it bigger than what most people want in an elementary, and second of all, you have to start adding additional square foot per kid because you're doubling up on those gym spaces, doubling up on the music space, the whatever. So 500 to 600 is kind of what I'm hearing is the magic norm for an elementary school to do. It can be less, it can be more, you can do anything you want to, but once you get more than 600, now you're needing more square foot per child because of the doubling up on some of the extras.
Okay, up until now, we've pretty much talked about capital budgets and, you know, how we, how we spend our dollars. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot of what our operating costs look like. of what our operating costs look like. So our total operating budget is about five point eight million dollars in eighteen nineteen. As you can see by the graph, eighty-four percent of that budget is eaten up by utilities, wages and benefits. We have about four point six percent that's used for supplies. That includes all our custodial supplies, fertilizers for athletic fields, road salt, you know, you name it, anything that we buy that's a supply. Our operational services are things like trash collection, recycling, medical waste disposal. Our maintenance services are things like, you know, having people come in, tune up the boilers, do all our mechanical PM kind of work. And then the other category is for everything else, that includes things like fuel, tools, uniforms. So again, just to give you a bit of a snapshot of how we operate on a, on a daily basis. So there's, there's not a whole heck of a lot left in there, but the one thing that I do try to really concentrate on is the utilities portion because that's the one thing that I can have a little bit of control over. So the next chart is our cost per square foot. And essentially, what this chart is, is there's a number of, all our buildings are looked at in that report that's on your desk. And this is just kind of putting everything on one page, so it's a little bit easier to see. So you have to look at utility costs in a, in a couple of different ways. You can look at it as a cost per square foot. And as you can see, our Ralz building is the highest cost per square foot that we have. McLean, we're down below seventy-five cents a square foot, and that's because McLean had a whole new HVAC system, new lighting. It's not LED, but it's the latest version of fluorescent, new control system put in that building. And we have a really good building operator over there. And that's where a lot of this comes out, is the guy that you have at the building makes a big difference. So that kind of gives you one perspective. But then, when you look at our total costs, you can see that our high school, we spend probably four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year on, just on energy at the high school. So when we try to do energy efficient projects, I'm going to go after our big buildings that we're using a lot at because if I can save three cents a square foot at the high school, I'm saving a lot of money as opposed to three cents a square foot at Ralz. So that's where we really try to put our energy. The report that you have on your desk is actually generated from some software that we started running from Focus on Energy. It's actually kind of a nice report that you've got there because it gives every building an Energy Star rating based on, on our utility bills and what we've used and the, and how the building is utilized. Our Energy Star scores are actually not so bad. You can see that there are six buildings that we would have qualified for an Energy Star ranking. But Energy Star is based on national standards. And actually, in Wisconsin, we, our buildings are, do pretty well on the Energy Star qualifications. Got to deal with winters and not everybody has to do that. So our buildings are usually pretty well insulated and pretty well put together. But the really important number that you see on there is the B-three peer rating. And that actually is data that's derived from Wisconsin schools and kind of gives you a better picture of where things fall. So I just wanted to make reference to that and that's all I have for you on utility.
Maybe a general comment. I'm a utility geek on, on rates.
I didn't know that.
So I can't remain silent on that. But, so I was dating back to when I was running for school board and I saw even one point three million dollars of utility spend. Man, that's a big chunk of money out of the eighty million dollar budget. Yeah, could you save five hundred thousand on utility spend? But I don't know, I'm just giving the operational of these buildings, kudos, because I'm looking at the one slide, one, one, slide one before. To be one dollar under on, what, ten out of our eleven facilities is not the norm. The norm is much higher. I have ten years' experience in the business world selling in the K-12 school districts on a utility rate that half the buildings, I would say, are spending more than a dollar overall. I'm generalizing somewhat. I don't know if you agree. So to have ten out of our eleven buildings spending, there's not much to gain on utility savings from the budget. And I just want to commend you on your frugal use of our HVAC systems to get the most out of our buildings.
We have to make sure that we provide the best environment for education. That's what we're really here for. But really, the credit goes to the guys that are operating these buildings that are out in the field. I mean, the fact that our high school is under a dollar square foot with that jalopy system and operating pool on top of it. I mean, those guys, I really take my hat off to them.
So that's, yeah, good kudos. The
Thank you.
Challenge is, yes, we still need to update our, our equipment and do that without some of the savings that might help pay for it, whether you do it operationally or capitalized. So that's just a comment for later, but I just didn't want to let that slide go by. I was even pleasantly surprised on what you were able to do.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Excuse me. Dave, I see the report has some statistics that talk about natural gas consumption, that talk about electrical consumption. Can you talk a little bit about that and specifically, are there any buildings that are heated by electricity or that be referring to air conditioning or air conditioning or lighting?
That really refers to lighting and air conditioning. Actually, when the, when the high school was constructed, it actually was constructed as an all-electric building. So it's been retrofit over time. That was in nineteen seventy and nuclear was the big thing and never going to be giving electricity away. So needless to say, that didn't turn out so well. So there have been tons of retrofits done at the high school just to get things onto natural gas that, that can, can do that. But yeah, that is really, we, we have an opportunity on the natural gas side of things to actually save some money primarily at Jackson and at Fair Park because those are steam systems. And a hot water system is a lot more efficient than a, than a steam system, requires less maintenance and, and again, is, is more, more energy efficient.
Dave, can you go to the next slide for just a second?
Next slide?
Yeah. So Joel asked the question earlier, would you save much money with a Ralz or a maintenance and ESC? And so the, the, obviously, if you look at how small their pot of money is that we spend on utilities, you're not going to save a lot. Okay?
Ralz is fifteen thousand dollars a year. The ESC is about thirty to thirty-five because we're operating twelve months a year and twelve hours a day. The maintenance building is five thousand dollars a year combined.
So you, you certainly aren't going to balance the budget on those savings. But the, the other question that really comes to play though is that for Ralz, it's not so much that we're going to save a ton of money. We'll save a little bit, but it's not a very good facility for what we're using it for. And if we have extra space, now we can do a better job of utilizing the space someplace else. Plus, you save ten thousand, fifteen thousand, you save the, a custodian, you save some of those other things. But it, it really isn't so much about the utility savings as much as you get one more, because there's other costs as well. There are insurance, there are maintenance upkeep, all the different things with it. And the same with ESC, is you're not going to save a ton of money either way. But when you look at our enrollment projections, I would never recommend that you build a new elementary bigger so that you could house Ralz, the ESC, the maintenance shop. But you might want to consider Ralz and the ESC to go someplace else to better utilize the space that we have available. That Silverbrook has capacity for a thousand kids. We're at eight fifty. Soon we'll be at seven fifty. What do you do with the room for those other two hundred and fifty kids? Is that a good place for Ralz? Okay? Badger, the high school, the same way. As the high school loses enrollment, is there space available for this building to go there? This building doesn't have to be in its entirety in one building. You certainly want the superintendent's office, the finance office and HR together. The assistant superintendent and, and special services, it's nice to have everybody there, but if they're in Badger and we're at high school or vice versa, that's not as much of an issue as it is for a couple of them. So, so when you look at it, it's not just the utilities, even though there's a little bit of savings there, there's some custodian, but it's also how do we better utilize the space that we have available five years from now in our bigger buildings?
Yeah. We really have to look at our facilities more as a real estate portfolio than just as space that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Andy.
Dave, one last question. On this slide, are there, is there any meaning to the asterisks on some of the buildings?
Those are the buildings that would have qualified for an Energy Star rating. The high school, the cutoff is seventy-five. The high school was at seventy-four. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Missed it by that much.
There is a handout coming here a few slides from now. We'll talk about transportation. Let's jump in. Property values. We have nine municipalities. We just, we're talking about this here within the last month, month and a half. We're a district that's five point two, almost five point three billion dollars. We've been growing just a little bit faster than the state average. Again, this year's property value growth is seven point one, district, statewide around six percent. The prior year, we grew by a little bit over four percent with the state average of right at four. And why I'm, I'm going to be building here. So again, nine municipalities. And coincidentally, as we have some of our elementaries or our five elementaries, how do they fit into the mix? And if you'd like, I did not have one, there's that handout on transportation. This was my sketching based on our attached, based on our attendance areas. And then I essentially overlaid it with our municipalities just to see where everything fit and whatnot. So I wanted to show that. I think that's important. And again, I can scan this and get this out to you. I would assume here at some point, we're going to start having some foam boards. We'll probably have the attendance area. We can do some of these overlays and whatnot. We'll get them professionally done, I would guess, if we continue to progress on these conversations. But specifically, that was discussed on the eighteenth, what's south of NN? So again, we're looking north of PV, but it, it, coincidentally, it is actually south by one mile, because they are one section miles, or I think I said that right, just south of the, the Jackson Elementary Attendance Area. But what is south of NN? It includes all of the Village of Jackson within our boundaries. I'm not extending out that, that includes, it'd be Slinger. It's the full town of Jackson, the full town of Polk, and then just a sliver of the West Bend, the Town of West Bend, which is the southeast corner of that. It totals one point one billion dollars. I estimated that. You can't hold me exactly to it. I used some square foot, or excuse me, some square mile estimations to determine this. I think I'm pretty close. But we're literally over one point one billion dollars. It represents twenty-one point two percent of our total property value. So over one-fifth of our property value, south of NN. Okay?
When you say south of NN, you mean, because NN jogs
Yep.
And goes north.
So what I ended up doing is on the far western border that we have, it kind of comes up at a little bit of an angle. It flattens out until it hits P. I should do it this way. It goes north two miles on P, turns, heads west again, and then it starts to curve down.
The two miles north of P, all that part of the northern lateral of NN is included? Okay.
That, that, that would be included. And that's my kind of option two, or my second scenario, is if we actually do, and I know you can't see it from there, but we have a solid line that's NN. The Jackson, which is the blue area here, Jackson actually goes up one more mile, which is Rusko. So that's where I'm going to go next. Is if we actually go to Rusko Drive, which encompasses all of the Jackson Elementary Attendance Area, we just added ten, ten, eleven square miles of a ninety-eight square mile school district. We just jumped up to two, one point two five billion. We're up to just under twenty-five percent of our school district's property value within the Jackson Attendance Area. Again, this is an estimation. I think I'm pretty close. Why is this important? As we take a look at an eight dollar mill rate, when you pay a thousand, eight dollars per thousand dollars of assessed value, we're in, we're in over thirty million dollars of levied money, both for operational as well as debt. We have about twenty-five percent of that is for debt purposes. But Jackson, the Village of Jackson, the Town of Jackson, Polk, portions of Town of West Bend, essentially, the Jackson Elementary area has been footing essentially a quarter of a percentage of that for twenty five, twenty, twenty-five percent of that forever. Okay? It's important to know. I'm glad that the question was asked. So we just need a nice understanding of what that means.
Andy, about two million dollars of debt service annually from south of Roscoe?
Yeah.
So, so when you look at what's everybody paying, so if you took south of Roscoe, which is the Jackson boundary lines as far as our elementary school, about two million annually from that area is paying for debt service for the entire school district. And so for Silverbrook and Badger and, and addition to Green Tree and, and whatever else we might have. Is that, that's pretty close, right?
Yeah, that's accurate. So this year, again, as, as we have our referendum, which we're defusing a little bit of debt, but we levied about six million dollars, shy of six million dollars, as well as our non-referendum debt, another two million dollars. So eight million total, twenty-five percent of that, two, two million dollars. Wanted to just talk a little bit about leasing. That question got brought up. It's actually a call that I get about two or three times a year. Andrew, my name is John Smith. I represent a company that can come in and build a new school. We can lease to own it for you. Are you interested? The problem that we have in Wisconsin is that there's revenue limits. And so anything that we do, if it comes out of our general fund within the revenue limit, there's constraints on that. So by all means, we can lease property, we can do a lease to own, but it has to be within our operational dollars. The times where we can get additional funding, there's very few exceptions, one of which in the past, without a referendum, has been a revenue limited exemption. There's times where you can ask for additional authority to do projects and whatnot. Right now, that legislation has been terminated. There's discussions about it potentially coming back. So that's outside of the revenue limit. The only other real time is if you ask for a referendum. Referendum is when we go to the community asking for their authority to exceed the revenue limit, either for A, operational purposes, which a lease could fall under operational purposes. You could ask for additional authority. That's how you'd phrase that question with the legal jargon is, the district would like to exceed the revenue limit by X number of dollars for X, Y period of years. There's an article today about Kettle Marine, they're looking at doing that for operational purposes. Many school districts in Wisconsin do that. The other time is when you ask for debt issuance. So this last April, we had a failed referendum for forty-seven million dollars. And the legal description of that was giving the board the authorization to enter into debt for the purposes of constructing, constructing Jackson, a new Jackson Elementary renovation of the high school. That's what you're legally allowed to touch when you word such a project. So, you know, when we look at construction, typically, school districts will generally build themselves. And sometimes construction referendums are easier to pass than operational. Depends how you tell the story, depends on how you establish the need, a lot of variables that go into it. But generally, school districts, when they want to build something, I'm not aware of a school district in Wisconsin that has done the lease to own through an operational referendum or even just through their own dollars, a brand new building. It is legally allowable, though. Generally, they use the debt issuance to be able to build a new building. They outright own it. They make those debt payments. They retire the debt over a five, ten, twenty year period.
Andy?
Go ahead. On a much smaller scale, let's think about a maintenance shed. Could you, you could lease a maintenance shed from somebody, obviously under your operational budget. And if you have the budget for it, go ahead and do it. If you don't, then you go to referendum, an operational referendum to do it. Am I understanding that right?
You could. Yep. Pathways was an example. We were leasing. We've, we've leased, leased spaces.
Right. Pathways, good example. We, we were leasing that building and it came out of our operational budget.
Exactly.
Yep.
Andy, can you tell real quickly the downside of an operational referendum in the West Bend School District? For some districts, it makes sense. For others, it doesn't. I'm not so sure. In West Bend, an operational referendum will ever work because of our property limits.
Yeah. Property value. Yeah. Great, great question. So I, I hope maybe at some point in the next year, I could get in front of you and I graph out a three-tiered approach. Yeah, property value. Yeah, great, great question. So, um, I, I, I hope maybe at some point in the next year, I could get in front of you and I graph out a three-tiered approach. And how the mix between our state aid and property taxes, that there's a three-tiered formula. And the state essentially guarantees tier one, and it's all based on how much you spend versus how property-rich you are. And if you remember, we're above average in our property wealth primarily because of our industry, also because of our density of students to other property values. So because of that, because of our spending, we're just under this tertiary threshold. And we're over into an area because of our property wealth, that when you triangulate those, if we ended up having an operational referendum. That's essentially spending per child. It's allowing us access to money where we would spend, because that variable is how much you spend per child. It could potentially tip us into this negative tertiary aid. So what happens is, is that for every dollar that we levy, and I'm, I'm giving estimations, I, I, I don't even, I haven't crunched these numbers. But let's say we levied a dollar. We cracked right into that negative tertiary aid area because of our property wealth. We might only get to keep seventy cents of that. The other thirty goes back, goes back to the state and it goes to the property poorer districts. A Platteville, an area without lakes, an area without a lot of industry. Areas of high populated, high-density student population, again, that their property value per child is lower than ours, or lower than the state average. Great question. Thank you, sir.
So Andy, just to play that back for the people at home. So if we needed an operating referendum for ten thousand dollars a year to go lease a new facility. We may actually lose two to three thousand dollars in the state funding coming to us today because of where we are in the property-rich model and so forth. So it's not just getting the approval from the public, but we have to then make up that two to three thousand dollar shortfall, twenty to thirty percent shortfall.
Yep. So then the, we would ask, the question might read, grant the West Bend School District the authority to exceed the revenue limit by ten thousand dollars. For the purpose of leasing a facility. We would then pretend, we get access to that additional money, potentially. We might only get to keep seven thousand of that. Property taxes would offset the difference. Therefore, property taxes could go up by three thousand dollars because of that. So, yes.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question on that topic? It's, it's, it's great to get creative and think about that. Again, just making sure that we understand that. I'm going to slide to the, the sheet. This is a detail. I have a summary here. And again, not knowing what you guys have talked about the last few years, and I know we have three, a couple, several new board members. But we operate with Johnson Transportation, Johnson Bus. Um, we've been with them a number of years. They're one of those, uh, um, organizations that I'd say is a pretty great partner. In terms of the relationship that we have to have. Um, but we operate a three-tier routing system. And so that's where, as you can see on the handout, we have three tiers in the morning, the blue, pink, and yellow. We do only operate two at lunch, or at noon, with the programs, 4K, um, Head Start, um, those, those programs related to kind of partial day programs. And then again, we operate three tiers in the afternoon, just barely. We only have a couple, um, in the late afternoon. But really what this does is it allows us to, um, utilize the buses, which buses are expensive, and drivers, which there's a driver shortage right now. It allows us to utilize both of those different components, um, a little bit more efficiently. They can have the buses moving around a little bit more than if you only had one or two tiers. And that driver can be utilized and potentially even string, uh, stretch out their workday just a little bit more as well. It does shorten the routes. Um, so again, it's really dependent on the school district, how big we are. Again, we're right around a hundred square miles. Um, we have five elementaries. What does that then look like with our start times and how, how frequently we can, um, get those buses and utilize them with some early start times, some mid and some late start times? And then as well, we do have some designated routes for specialized students. Uh, special ed, uh, students have to have designated routes based on their IEPs. Um, and then as well, like I said, Head Start, some of these 4K program, the 4K programs, even with our satellite, um, partners that we have. We operate transportation for that as well. So, um, that's, that's kind of transportation in a nutshell. Let's talk about some of the numbers.
Before you go any further, Andy, it, when you look at that first, the section that Andy just gave you, the handout, and the, the yellow is tier three in the morning. We really would like to change the start time for the high school. We know that it's not as conducive as it should be. Research shows that high school start time at seven fifteen is earlier than it should be. The problem is that it becomes extremely expensive, that, that, that becomes, the reason we can do those three tiers. Is because the morning drop-off allows us to, to then go out and pick up other kids. So if you move the start time back to eight o'clock, which would be a normal start time for a lot of high schools. Then most of those three-tier routes are gone because we don't have the time to get that bus out to the next route. At best, you could do a two-tier. Sometimes you can only do a one-tier, and then it becomes way more expensive per bus. Because you've got more buses out, you have more bus drivers out as opposed to fewer bus drivers with, with two or three routes. And so a, as we talk in the high school times, you know, there's no question, we would like to push back our start time for the high school if we could. The problem is with the three-tier bus system, that becomes very expensive. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. Let's get into, oh, please.
Is it safe to assume the blue tier one would be high school then? Pretty much, right? I mean, if that's the first, if those are the first routes of the day.
I've got Nancy sitting at home right now, watching this, probably shaking her finger at the screen. And if, if she was here and I told her to text me if I was seeing anything.
She's on the phone.
Oh, different Nancy.
Different Nancy.
I'm on the phone and I can hear you.
Oh, a different, a different Nancy.
Nancy Deepenbaugh, so definitely so.
Oh, different Nancy, okay.
Transportation.
Transportation Nancy.
Yeah. So, um, she, she, she would know that. She has more intimate knowledge of that. And what my, my plan is, a little bit higher level, let's crack into some of the numbers today. And if at some point, the reason that we're discussing this is, if we were to plunk down a brand-new mega elementary that's just south of the high school and that's land for sale. What does that mean for our transportation? How are we going to start understanding what kind of costs that we're going to have to incur by transporting those students differently? You're going to be crossing more hazards, longer areas that, that are outside of walk zones and whatnot. So I just want to get a little bit of an understanding of what transportation looks like within our district.
Joel, I think the high school is more the yellow. I, I, it's, it's gotta be. The high school is, can't be the blue because we don't have that many kids riding buses on it. So high school's got, and that first row has to be the yellow. Yeah, so the blue has got to be the elementary, the, the later start time.
I, I will confirm that.
No, it doesn't matter. I was going to suggest that maybe we don't bus high school kids at all. Maybe they walk or drive or carpool or whatever. I mean, Uber, they can Uber to high school.
I don't know for sure what the Wisconsin statute is.
We're, we're required.
Yeah, so I think there's, but, but some places it's not. Some places you're, you have to provide transportation to a certain age. But I think in Wisconsin, it's based on, everybody gets transportation.
I believe based on distance, based on age and grade or grade level, so.
So th- this is information that I've had access to in, in other districts. It's, it's good to look at it, and once we start looking at some of the numbers, I think we're, I think we're, we're asking some questions. Johnson Bus, they've already taken four routes and combined them into two different routes with some consolidation. Um, they're starting to ask if parents, where we've never picked up Little Johnny or Little Susie, if we can then ask that family to pull them off of that route. In order to either shorten a route or even combine a couple more. So this is really good information, and I think some of the numbers are telling. Again, this is based on AM, noon, and PM. I have each of the columns summarized down in the bottom. And on the way bottom left is where I have all of the district information summarized on the chart as well as in this slide. Of all eight, excuse me, ten, of all ten routes that we're running, we operate a hundred and sixty daily routes. We're transporting, and this is duplicated because Little Johnny or Little Susie could be riding in the morning and in the afternoon, counting for two trips. But there's four thousand nine, uh, four thousand ninety-five average daily riders as of November. Again, this is about information about two weeks old. On average, ten thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars is a daily cost, again, from home to school and school to home. A total of ten thousand dollars a day. Talking about, uh, two million dollars a year, again, just for that piece. Additional cost for co-curricular, some of those other activities, field trips and whatnot, but just that to and from school to home, about two million dollars or ten thousand dollars a day. Average rights, route size right now is twenty-five point five-nine riders. That's completely on average. But some of the specialized routes that we have, both the special ed, the, the little kids, the wee littles and whatnot, they do bring the average down a little bit. I excluded them just to see what those AM and PM routes look like for the regular routes. And we're still only at about thirty students per bus on average for all of our routes. The average route cost right now is sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents per day. And then the average daily, when you, when you start dividing all of this out, and again, Little Johnny or Little Susie, it might be twice because they ride to school and back home. But each route is two dollars and fifty cents per student. I'd love to have some comparable data. I'm probably going to be talking with a few colleagues just to see if they can't do some of this quick math crunching. They may even have this information, or they may, may even wish to ask their bus company for this information. But I'd love to get some comparables. I don't have any right now. I can't say if that's high or low or whatnot.
Andy, is it sixty-three ninety-six times two for morning and afternoon?
Yep, it's per route. So if, if there's a bus that goes and does the route in the morning and then the afternoon, that's a hundred, yeah, a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty.
And if they did, if they were a three-tier or two-tier, it'd be times three or times two or times five or six or whatever, yeah.
There might be a bus that does all eight, and it's at sixty-three times eight. Any questions on transportation? Feel free to keep those. We'll get those posted. Those, I, I've, I've had it, but we did not get that posted.
Johnson's okay with us posting this? They've been a great partner for a long time, and I appreciate the, um, really diving into the data on that, so. Uh, are you, are you two students here for government class? So, uh, two weeks ago, I let the students leave at six-thirty. Would you guys like to leave? Are you learning anything? Okay, well, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, Mr. Hanson can sign your paper for you and you guys can leave. So, but thanks for coming. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. All right, Andy, go ahead.
Nancy did text, not Nancy on the phone, but Nancy at home, and she said the single-digit route numbers are high school routes. So as we take a look at just that top-left route is one slash one oh one slash sixty-one. The single-digit route numbers are high school routes. So that, um, is route number one.
I see.
Forty-two students is that blue high school route. Blue is high school, yeah.
One, two, five, six, seven, eight, all the way on down.
That middle column.
So down towards the bottom, there, those are not single.
Exactly.
Just those that I just read, yeah.
Yeah. And then we have Badger and Silverbrook, and then we have Elementary.
So, question on the busing topic. Have we looked at what percentage of kids are busing in Jackson out of the total student population?
Can you repeat that question, please?
So there's, doing this by memory, so there's three hundred and fifty, some kids, um, going to Jackson Elementary. What percentages of the kids are bused out of that three fifty-two to Jackson School versus not bused at all?
I would estimate that we're going to be talking about that pretty soon. I don't have the information off the top of my head unless Mr. Hanson remembers, uh, how many buses approximately there might be, uh, as of last year when he was still.
Or how many students bused to Jackson?
So that sort of seems, I've been down there when people are walking home, so it seems like the majority, fifty percent or more.
Parent pickups and whatnot, so what, again, just so you can hear is.
I'd be curious to find out if, if we did not have a neighborhood school in Jackson, how that would change as far as number of students that would require busing.
So almost everyone's in the walk zone. Um, so, I mean, yeah, I haven't done the math, but I would see it's a, it's a safe bet that if you didn't have a neighborhood school. You would more than double your number of students who would take the bus. But yeah, there were three routes last year. This year, there's only two, and, uh, a hundred might even be generous. Because the biggest route, I don't even know if it had sixty that really rode it every day, so.
And is it true that the, the land that we bought last year or earlier this year? That location would still have a lot of kids walking or, I mean, that wouldn't dramatically displace the number of bus riders or increase it?
No, so the district boundary ends one mile south of Highway sixty. So you'd only be moving a block further south, so you'd, you'd probably pick up a tiny amount on the upper end, close to Cedar Creek Road. But you'd probably gain some on the south end as well, which is all residential.
But to Tony's point of not having a neighborhood school in Jackson, if it was somewhere north out of the, out of the village. It's probably safe to say that all three hundred and fifty-one kids would end up needing to be bused. So a delta of two fifty, at thirty to forty kids per bus, that's three, four more buses at seventy-five grand a year. The numbers start to add up.
And, and, and that's, that's where I think the conversation is eventually going to go. Um, we, because we're now crossing Highway sixty south, all of those families that were within the walk zone, that's considered a hazardous boundary. We're either going to need, um, if it's even allowable, crossing guards, multiple crossing guards along sixty. And/or there's going to be more parents self-transporting, or again, they would qualify for transportation. But yes, if we had something further north, we either need to assume parents are going to do it because they don't want their children to be on the bus. Or we would, we would legal, legally be required to offer it.
So if you average fifty, and we're saying it's thirty, but you'd have more than that because it's a large group coming at one time. But if you average fifty and there's three hundred and fifty kids, you're talking seven buses and you have two. So your increase of, of five, four probably minimum. So if you look at seventy-five thousand bucks a bus or seventy thousand dollars, you're, you're looking at two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar increase in the Jackson transportation.
You do better math better than I do without a calculator.
Thank you. High School Configuration Board Policy Number One Eighty-Eight. Um, so it essentially acknowledges that we have two high school building, or we have two high schools under one building. And if that were to change, there is a fairly, what I'd say, a rigorous process, um, to go through. It's broken out into several steps, into a linear progression. It was adopted back in, uh, two thousand and fifteen. It was touched on, probably, it's been shared with me, to align special wording to say, "school board" rather than just the board and whatnot. But very little content was, uh, changed, uh, when, when it was last addressed back in two thousand and eighteen. Step number one essentially says, and, and please feel free to, uh, step in if you'd like to Superintendent Kerrigan. But essentially says the board makes the first decision whether or not they'd like to proceed with doing something, looking at it, having a discussion, and entertaining that. Following that, uh, there's a task force, uh, brought together of various stakeholders, um, that would have, uh, different meetings. Again, and, and I skipped over that. That's what I was just reading when I was silent, but at least four weeks later. So there, again, there's waiting periods and whatnot built into this. But there are specified meetings for the task force to come, uh, to meet. Um, and then they may take up to four months, uh, to bring the information back to the board. It's the board's, uh, ability then to accept the recommendation to proceed. It can either die at that point, or it can proceed then to step number three. Which is a non-binding, meaning kind of an advisory referendum, question to the constituents of the school district. Um, to get their opinion of what they believe would be right, what they prefer. Has to be at a gubernatorial or at a presidential election, meaning every two years. Finally, the board then, um, once after the referendum, and again, there's a waiting period. You have to have the entire board is what I'm reading, all seven of you in, in attendance. At four regularly scheduled board meetings. And you guys can then, uh, make the decision at that point in time to reconfigure.
Part of the, part of the reason we're discussing this tonight is, you know, I think you got to look at the context of when this was adopted. And it happened right after the board and the community at the time went through sort of a similar process. It wasn't, uh, a community task force and, and for public, but there was a survey involved. Uh, my wife and I remember taking the survey. Um, we happen to have a school board member who lived next door to us. I talked to him a lot about it. And then the, the community spoke and the board voted, we're going to keep the high schools as it is. And then boom, this policy's put into place. And I'll, I'll opinionize here a little bit. My opinion is it's put in. in place so that future boards don't make some quick, crazy, fast decision that we're going to one high school. So I understand the purpose of why this was adopted back when it was, but I think what the board at the time maybe didn't think about was that if we were ever in some sort of a financial crisis, or huge, hugely declining enrollment crisis, which I don't think we're in a hugely declining enrollment crisis, or certainly not a financial crisis, but what if we were, and combining the high schools could be an answer to saving a million bucks a year, or, or whatever. The way this policy reads, and all the steps Andy talks, I mean, this would take potentially years. I mean, if there wasn't a gubernatorial or a presidential election, and then there's four weeks of public input after that, there's four weeks of a community thing before that, and then, oh, by the way, step one of even just putting it on a board agenda, we actually have policies that talk about how our board agendas are put together, and whoever the president is at the time could say, I'm not putting that on the agenda. And then there's a whole nother process in place for board members to say, I want you to put a certain topic on an agenda. So, I think it's time we look at this policy. I'm not saying we totally eliminate it. I'm not saying that we, you know, I, maybe not necessarily start from scratch, but I think it's time we start looking at this policy just in case, in the future, the declining enrollment numbers, you know, back then, they were talking about, we could have the largest high school in the state of Wisconsin. Well, now we're talking about having two very small high schools i- in West Bend. And even if you were to combine them, they'd be an average-sized high school in West Bend. So, I think the point of this discussion, if I'm, if I remember our discussion beforehand, right, was, let's talk about it a little bit tonight, and we have to talk about this as it relates to our facilities and our budget, otherwise we will be off topic. Um, but, you know, is this something we want the policy committee to start thinking about and talking about? And of course, our policy meetings are open to all of our board members to come and, and voice opinions and ideas, but, um, it would be easier for us to close an elementary school than it would be to combine the two high schools. And I think that's just eye-opening. I'm not saying it's wrong, right, or wrong. I'm just saying it's eye-opening. We could, we could vote, we could put in a topic on an agenda for our next board meeting that we're going to have a vote, an action item on what to do with the ESC, or what to do with, you know, whatever. But this could be years before it actually not just happens, but before a decision is made to have it happen. So, I'll stop there, and I want to get kind of your thoughts, but I, we, let's make sure we keep this in, uh, you know, as it relates to our facilities and our, our budgets and things. Um, we're not here to talk about whether or not we should combine the high school. I guess what I'm asking is, is it okay to start looking at this policy?
So I'd be in favor of looking at the policy for all the reasons that you mentioned, but also, I, I look at it several ways. If you look at the very introductory section of the, of the policy, which I think is on slide thirty-three there, um, I, I think in, in the wisdom of prior boards, and I can understand why, when you look at it, it says, "The following process shall be enforced to ensure all stakeholders are involved in the process." And I think there are many ways to involve stakeholders in the process, and that's really, it sounds like what the main goal of this was. But the second part is, back to your discussion around budget and such, because of the gubernatorial, presidential, uh, timing, there's really a two-year blackout period between, that if interest rates went down to zero, well, it falls within the two years, we might not be able to take advantage of that. And again, there, it shouldn't just all be about money, but to, but to handicap ourselves like that, to say it's not even an option, seems extreme. So I think it's worthy of at least examining it. To that end, though, I would say that prior boards, I understand at that time, I think you're, you're right, there was a lot of very interesting discussion and a lot of passion, so I can understand the intent, but I think we need to balance that with, well, what are current circumstances, and what do we want to be sure that we give ourselves the, the flexibility and, um, uh, options to, to do. So I'm supportive of a review of it.
There's, you know, forty-five million dollars worth of work that they've showed us at the high school, and I just think we would be so remiss not to think about if we were to get forty-five million dollars and talk about paint. Dave mentioned paint. Well, do we start painting everything blue and maroon again? Or do we start talking about, maybe it's time we combine the high schools, and, and I'm, you know, and maybe that becomes part of a referendum question. You know, we, we want to borrow forty-five million bucks, and then a separate advisory question could be, do you want us to combine the high schools? And if the vote is, is yes and yes, well, there, we've got our answer.
I, I would, I agree. I would like the policy to be reviewed. Um, I don't think we need to decide right now, or even in the near future, about combining the schools, but if we're going to spend a lot of money, I would like to consider seeing it spent in such a way that, say, ten years from now, um, it's, we don't have to redo things. I mean, we can still, yeah, we, you can, it can, um, we can prepare for the future without combining it right, right away, so.
And I, I think it's important that we look at what the financial implications are, because are you going to get rid of, go to one A.D. for that amount of students? Probably not. It's, it's an A.D. and an assistant. What other administration are we going to consolidate and save? Maybe a head or two? I, I came out in twenty-fifteen as a very passionate supporter of the two high schools because it gives twice as many kids the option of participating in sports. Now, if enrollment continues to decline, and we're seeing more and more, uh, co-op teams, that's one thing, but I think we also need to consult Aaron and Kevin to find out, how quickly can we tell WIAA that, that one of our schools no longer exists, and they need to, you know, factor that into scheduling and so forth. So, I don't disagree with, with reviewing the policy, but I think having a, a two-year window to respond, WIA may say, we can't work with anything less than that either.
So just a couple real quick comments on that is that if you look at the policy, even if you change the policy, and you had all the input and you made the decision, once that decision has been made, and you're only going to do it for a couple reasons. One is finances, and the other was enrollment. And so, and I don't have a crystal ball on either one, but our enrollment numbers, unless something changes, will be down to sixteen-hundred kids between east and west, and not too far down the road, okay? So, is that still a lot of kids? Yeah, it is. But is it an unbelievably large high school? Probably not. But no matter what you do, even if you chose to do something, you're going to choose to do something for three years down the road, or two years down the road. If, if, if that decision was going to be made that we really want to look at one high school, and we go through all the work to do that, and, and you had public input and support for that, you're still going to make a decision for two or three years down the road. You're not saying, well, senior class, you're no longer a senior, you're no longer Spartan, you're a, a son, or vice versa. You, you may be looking at the, the current high school goes up, and as the high school, the freshmen graduate, by that time, we've, and I, that's all ifs and whats, but no matter what you do, to Paul's, um, comment is that it truly is going to be a lengthy process. It's not one that you jump into because it's a huge decision. We, we've been West Bend, east and west for fifty years, and we like that heritage, and so it's not something that you throw out just on a whim, but you truly have to look at all of the different financial, as well as enrollment data when that happens.
As long as you're looking for comments. I was at the meeting, I think it was in two thousand fifteen. Um, I'm just generalizing, um, but there was roughly two hundred people there. It was a, um, heavily interested community meeting. Um, it was in Badger, um, so it was a much bigger, um, venue than this, and it was packed, and I would say eighty to ninety percent of the, probably fifty people spoke. Eighty to ninety percent of the people were in favor of two high schools. I think, um, one of the reasons why the board policy was unanimous in the decision was the overwhelming community support over two high schools at the time. So, I'm just shedding lights from being there at that school board meeting and, and just seeing how people reacted and, and voted. Um, they did do some minimal, I don't think some extensive cost estimates. There was some minimal cost estimates done, but with sharing of teachers, you, you're, we're in one high school already. Um, you're sharing teachers. Everyone goes to the high school, um, and shares teachers between east and west. Yes, it's the sports teams, and it's, yes, some in administration and, and others. There's not a significant financial savings, but on the other hand, there is with, if you're talking six, seven hundred less kids in the high school, that's another topic. So, but those are just some observations from five years ago from being there.
Well, if it's okay, this, like you said, is a policy I'd like to see us start taking a look at. And whether or not it changes or not, I, I mean, it'll go through our process, but, um, I just, I find it just really interesting that it would take, you know, a lot of time for us to combine the high schools following this policy versus closing a school, and, uh, closing the elementary school, or, you know, some other major decision. And so I, I, I think I understand why the board put the policy in place at the time, but that was a while ago now. So, um, if that's okay, I'd like to ask policy that will take a look at that.
Any other questions or discussions, uh, on the other topics from this evening?
Thank you. Any other questions for Andy or Dave?
Thank you very much for prepping for all this and putting it together, and it's, it's great information. It's going to take a lot of, uh, time and thought and discussion to figure out where we're going, but this is all part of the process, and appreciate your hard work.
So, what I would like to do is to take a little time, not necessarily tonight, but then, what's our next step? What, what do we, you know, we've really looked at just strictly information at this point in time. So we looked at our facilities, we looked at enrollment, we looked at transportation, some other type of things. Now, now it's the difficult part, is what, what do we do with three hundred capacity at Silverbrook to make it more efficient? Or what do we do at Badger? What do we, do we have five elementaries and we should have four? If we have five, do, and those kind of things, and those are a lot more difficult conversations than the information that we shared the last couple of meetings. And so, what we'll try to do is to have some general topic suggestions for you at our meeting next Monday. And so, in January, I think we start the next round of discussions that gets more in-depth with facilities. Do we, you know, what, do we start looking at our boundary lines? Do we look at if we went from five elementaries to four, what does that mean? Where's the fourth one? Which one is that going to be? Is it, is, is a super school part of our discussion or not? Is it, uh, how, you know, what, what are some things we can take off the table so that we can put things on the table and go from there? Maybe that's the first thing we do is decide what we're going to take off the table, so we're not spending an enormous amount of time talking about things that there's no interest in doing, and then go from there. But, uh, you know, and one of the first things that I would suggest is that we officially put the rest, that, that, there will be no referendum in April. We'd have to do that in January if that was going to be, that, that's the latest you could, to have a motion for a referendum would be January, and I just think there's no way possible that we're anywhere ready for a referendum if, in, in April. I mean, the earliest that I could see would be November, but we have a lot of stuff to do before that could happen as well. So if that's okay with you, and if you have suggestions, please get those to us, and we'll start coming up with possible, um, what's our next meeting look like, and, and go from there. And, um, I think this is too important for us to just try to sneak it in on a regular board meeting night. I think this committee, the whole, works well for this type of discussion, and we might need to have two a month rather than one a month just to accomplish what we need to accomplish, because I think we need some definite direction by April as to where, what are we looking at, and kind of go from there.
Is it easy to, um, plot out where our students live and overlay it on top of the boundary map?
I've worked with one company. I've had folks that have done it. Um, I've not done it myself, but there, there are organizations out there that specialize in that. The one that I've worked with in two different districts is called Guide K Twelve, but any piece of information that you think of that can be mapped out, voter information, household income, free and reduced, anything, including where they live, can be, can be mapped out and.
This company does it. We'd have to pay them to do it?
We don't have the capacity right now. I don't know if, I don't know if Tim has, like, Google. You know, I know you can do stuff within Google, but.
Can we use Skyward Student Data to plot, which has our students' addresses, or is that considered confidential information?
That's where you would utilize that information to populate the service.
Sure.
But yeah, because then what, what, what the service specializes in is you can literally start drawing, or even draw circumferences around pieces of land and determine.
Yeah, radiuses of busing or.
Or say, I want, I want six hundred kids to go to this brand-new school on this piece of land, and it will pull based on and show you what those boundaries look like. There's, there's different, so I think we can start looking at what that might look like, but we don't have the capacity ourselves at this point in time.
One more piece of information that you had asked about, and that is where's our enrollment projections? What's, not just enrollment, but population projections. And so we asked John at the Village of Jackson what their anticipation growth is going to be, and they have a fifty-year growth of double, and by twenty-thirty, it's ten thousand.
Correct, yeah.
And so I believe that's what they're suggesting, ten thousand by twenty-thirty. Total of ten thousand. Now it's about seven, and a doubling in, by fifty. The other part is, I know that when Dave did the last, um, data that he got from, I don't know, who, APL, then Jackson was the only part of the district that was growing at the same rate as the state. The rest of the district was not growing as fast as the state, Jackson was. And so, as you look at our enrollment, our growth of the district, it seems like south of Roscoe Road will have a greater population density increase than north of Roscoe Road unless something changes.
I'm just going to throw a couple of questions, comments out that I've heard and, and read on Facebook and things. People ask, why can't Jackson just make their own, why can't they leave West Bend and make their own school district?
And I don't know for sure. It would have to go through DPI, and has to get approval. Um, they would certainly look at a K-eight district as opposed to a K-twelve district, and, um, and I don't know the specific laws, and maybe Andy, you do.
I followed, so Union, uh, Sernavent, which is one of the Racine suburbs, went through that a few years ago, where they're having discussions, but there's a very laid-out process on the DPI website, um, but it talks about having meetings. It is actually a referendum question, um, that goes about, so. And they could, K-twelve, um, they would have to build a high school, but they, they, they could actually be.
And how would they pay for it?
They, they would, um, they would be detached from the West Bend schools. They'd be their own taxing entity. It would be the Jackson School District.
It would be valued at about.
One-point-two-five billion dollars.
One-point-two-five billion dollars depending on.
Yeah, depends on what part went there and didn't go there.
Um, they, they, they actually total out our existing debt, and some of our existing debt does go with them. So I mean, right off the bat, before they even laid the first brick, they are, they would be in debt, um, but they, that is similar to consolidation. There's one where there, there can be districts that can break apart.
However, they would start with that, but we would also lose a large chunk of, I mean, twenty-five percent of the value of our district comes from Jackson, so I'm not sure who is suggesting that they go off on their own.
I'm not suggesting, and I'm just asking.
I know you aren't, but I'm saying, I, I presume that they're, these are people in West Bend that would like Jackson to just go away, and they don't realize that we kind of need them.
Yeah, but I think it's as much Jackson, I've been at Jackson for several meetings, and I know that that's been brought up on several occasions, is that, you know, that should we have our own district? should we have our own district? I think the Village of Jackson is the largest municipality in the state of Wisconsin without its own school district. And so that, if the question was to build a super school and bus everybody there, that would get significantly more traction from the Village of Jackson, because there's no question, there's already a significant number of people saying, "What, we really should be our own entity." And I'm not saying everybody in the town of West Bend would want to go there, or Roscoe would want to go there, but you're right, it's a fourth of the valuation of the district, and I know there are significant, and Aaron, you're there, I know there's significant discussion about having their own entity right now within the group of Jackson people.
And along those same lines, there's also a lot of discussion about, can we secede from West Bend and join Slinger or Germantown, as that's where the kids are open and rolling, to what does that look like? How would that go through?
Again, there's a process that's laid out on the DPI website for that to happen.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, as a resident, I think that's just frustration of the people who live in Jackson. And they're frustrated with West Bend, especially when you look at the referendum election results, they all voted for it, and West Bend didn't, and so it's sad, but go ahead, Tom.
I was just going to repeat what you said, the referendum results were overwhelming, that Jackson itself wanted to replace Jackson Elementary's neighborhood school, and they feel frustrated, so.
In preparation for today, I went and I looked at the Jackson 2035 Plan from 2009, and they openly talk about the need for a replaced elementary school down there, and the working relationship with West Bend School District. And, yeah, I think, you know, they've heard it for twenty, thirty, forty years, that it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, and it's frustration boiling over that they've been paying in for everything up here. And yes, their students get benefit when they come to Silverbrook and Badger and the high school, but don't look at that building right down the road. So Don, to your comments, I've got two comments in response. One, I agree with your timing, that to try to do something in April, I do not feel comfortable that that's the right thing for us to do for the community. And two, in terms of next steps, one of the recommendations from the task force was to update our twenty-five-year plan. And I don't, you know, Dave, we've seen some incremental updates and so forth, but I would really like to sit down with the information from John Wallfair on where the Village of Jackson is going, but then also sit down with West Bend leadership, where do they see the growth happening? Where are the potential subdivisions, north of town, south of town, whatever the case may be, to help feed into those enrollment projections and placement of a potential facility before we, you know, get into, well, what else do we do at the high school? What do we do with McClain, Green Tree, and so forth? I think getting that twenty-five-year vision cast is going to be instrumental in helping us figure out what we do next with the actual facilities.
Well, I had a similar thought, wondering if we couldn't ask someone from EDWC to comment on businesses, startups, where do they see the development happening? Because with development usually comes housing starts, and with housing starts, we have population shifts, and I'd like to see that as well, if we could. And maybe there's another source besides EDWC, but something helping us look into the future. We got population numbers, which is very impactful, very helpful, but what might, what might future development look like? And not just in, not just in Jackson, but throughout, throughout the county and within our, within our district boundaries.
And so the West Bend Economic Development Corporation is pretty much all but done. So they're not operational, but they still have the Washington County one, and that would be a better source of information. So I think, I believe Christian is the head of that organization. I'll see if I can't get him to come and talk to us.
Would that include realtors, residential realtors? I've heard, I've heard some community participation suggesting that the property value in Jackson would go down if that school doesn't get replaced, or if it were to be moved to the proposed location.
Yes, well, you certainly can do that, but there's no question at all that people in Jackson are not happy with the thought of not having a neighborhood school, even if it was K-three, K-five, K-whatever. They truly believe that a school needs to be in Jackson, like I said, it would be the largest community in the state of Wisconsin without any educational facility there. And so I guess there's no question that, that you would see significant support for seceding from the West Bend district, or starting their own district, or asking if they can attach to a different one.
Good comments. Questions, concerns before we leave? Anything else, Superintendent?
No, I'll do her.
Good meeting tonight, and appreciate all the comments. And we're back on December ninth for a regular board meeting at 5:30.
Correct. We have a closed session to talk about school safety plans beforehand, and then we have a closed session after the meeting to talk about personnel and salaries.
So at five, what time is our closed session prior?
Five o'clock, I believe. Five o'clock.
Closed session at five o'clock on December nine.
And we'll have a board meeting at 5:30.
Great. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you for keeping us in the state.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Nancy.